Recording has begun. Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
All right. Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00. I'm going to take a roll call. Councilman Goldsmith. I see. Can you hear me?
I'm here.
Good. Councilman Trolinger, I think, is on his way. Councilwoman Bryant Ward. Councilman Jenkins.
Here.
And Mayor James is here. If you all could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, wonderful, and just as well.
Thank you very much. The first item on today's agenda is Ordinance 22-03, Historic Preservation Commission Ordinance for Introduction. Mr. Manuel, you want to take that one?
Yeah. Before I read the preamble, if you will, I will just go through some of the changes because I've realized council may not be as aware. I think the intent is to reduce the number of members from seven to five. In doing so, these necessitates these amendments as well as it speaks to the... Let me go ahead and read. Commission members... Sorry. There is a section in here which speaks to the town council member who's also appointed. I don't know why that is passing me by. Could be my eyes.
I think it's paragraph F, isn't it?
Paragraph F. Thank you, Councilman. Yes, the mayor shall appoint with the approval the remaining members of the town council, member of the council, to serve as a voting representative of the commission. The term of the representative shall correspond to his or her term as member of town council. And then also having to affect... It also affects the number necessary for a quorum in paragraph 116B. So I just wanted to make you aware of sort of the... Councilman Goldsmith being the representative to this commission. I do not know if you have anything else you would like to add.
No, there's nothing I need to add. I think you've got it in control.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward, do you have a comment?
I just want to know what prompted the changing of the number of members.
I will allow Mr. or Councilman Goldsmith to address that.
I'm sorry, I did not hear that question.
You can't hear... Is there a way to turn up... I'm sorry, guys. Is there a way to turn up the volume? It is hard. I'm having a hard time hearing, too. I'm having a hard time hearing everyone. Kelly or Craig?
Is that any better?
Better, yes. Thank you.
My question was, what prompted the change in the number of members for the commission?
I think it was difficulty getting all of them filled with one thing and plus getting them all there at the same time. And that five would still allow a quorum of three to conduct business if necessary.
Okay. Thank you. And this also mirrors the other commissions and committees that we have. When this was brought back a few years ago with prior council, we even questioned having seven because seven was quite a bit versus five board members. But this used to be the historic district committee, preservation committee, and they kind of morphed it into what it is today. So it is easier to have a quorum with five versus seven. Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dave Jenkins, Ward 4. I do have just, I guess, a question. Maybe I didn't read it the right way. Paragraph E. We're talk... Yeah. Paragraph E. Members, each member is a three-year term, but then it says, quote, "No more limits as to the number of consecutive terms." I'm not sure I understand that. So they have a three-year term, but then they can't be consecutive? I'm not sure if that... Am I reading that right or wrong?
Oh, so there's no limit. So you can serve forever.
Oh, okay. It's awkward wording to me.
Yes. Yeah, it is wording.
The wording is a little confusing, but I think the intent is to not have term limits because there is sometimes difficulty finding people to serve.
I think there's somewhere in there that represents...
Okay.
That states about term limits as well. They said that there would be none.
Yeah, there shall be no more limit as to the number of consecutive terms a member of the commission can serve.
And then just, I guess, I thought at one time there was some discussion from a previous meeting that perhaps we would want to look... Or us or whatever would look at maybe beefing it up or having a little bit more bite or more incentives to get folks to think about preserving homes or providing some kind of incentive within this particular piece of legislation. Maybe I can come in the future, but I know we had a brief discussion about it a couple of months ago. I don't know whether that's still on the table or not.
Oh, I'm sure it's still on the table, but that would be a great question for Councilman Goldsmith or course of action there to see if it can be enhanced so that we do have guidelines to preserve these pieces of property that are historic.
Yeah, and it may be best to come out of that committee if they want to make recommendations for council to consider. So that would be a clear path.
So we kind of went out of order a little bit. Councilman Trolinger, do you have... We're open for discussion, and then we'll take a motion.
No, it's okay. I think, you know, when it hits you, you got to ask.
Absolutely.
You're going to forget it. That's okay. Mr. Manuel, I don't know if you know just historically if there is value to the staggering of the terms previously. So it looks like there was an intentional short stint and then a kind of a medium stint as far as one year, three year, four year. And we're getting rid of that. Is that a concern at all? Is that...
I don't know that it's a concern of all since it is an existing committee. If we were standing it up for the first time, sometimes there's value in having that sort of a turnover and staggering the terms. I believe... I don't have the sheet in front of me, but I believe our current members are staggered in their terms. So we just continue along that process.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
They are... And I asked the same question previously, not this evening, because that was a concern of mine. And they are staggered. That's why we don't need that in the document now. Okay, so now that we've had our discussion, do I have a motion to accept the Ordinance 22-03, the Historic Preservation Commission Ordinance? With all its... Oh, it's only for introduction. We don't really care.
For introduction, correct.
Okay, so I have introduced it, and I will make a motion next time. All right. Thank you. Good. Any other questions or comments on that? Jim, you good?
I'm good.
All right. Fantastic. All right. So this brings us to the FY 2023 Proposed Budget and Capital Improvement Plan. The enterprise funds, come on down. Bobby, I'm glad to see you made it back safely. Night in shining armor. You know, there's some good shopping there, though.
That's what I said. Central Park.
Yes, that's not a bad place to go. All right. Mr. Greenville, show is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council. Kevin Greenville, Town Treasurer, here with our Director of Operations, Bobby Stahl, to present the enterprise funds for the FY 23 budget. Just read over just briefly the Town Manager's Transmittal Letter section of the enterprise funds. The FY 23 enterprise funds equals approximately $15.7 million. This represents an increase over the FY 22 budget of approximately $4.9 million or 37%. Most of this increase is attributable to personnel, operating costs, our USDA loan projects, and ARPA funds. There is, you know, over $2 million budgeted for ARPA funds within the enterprise funds. Just as a reminder, services for which the town charges a fee are reported in the proprietary funds, and we only have one type of proprietary fund, which is an enterprise fund. We maintain two major enterprise funds, the Water and Sewer Fund and the Sanitation Fund. And then we have a third non-major fund, the Stormwater Utility Fund. The Water and Sewer Fund are segregated for budgetary purposes and for accounting purposes, but in our financial statements, they're presented as one fund. And, you know, just as with most municipalities, we face significant challenges with our enterprise funds. One of the big ones is the development that is happening in town. Just the Heritage Green development alone is going to create up to 3,200 dwelling units. We also have several other annexations under consideration and already established developments selling homes at accelerated pace. This significant growth, we're going to need to make some upgrades to the town sanitary system. In March of 2022, USDA obligated the town $12.65 million in loan funding for these projects. The money was obligated at an interest rate of 1.75%, a term of 40 years, and there is no prepayment penalty. Within the stormwater fund, we have an MS-4 permit from the state. This is going to require us to meet certain standards and cause us to do significant upgrades to untreated impervious surfaces to the... Our stormwater standards. Fortunately, our ARPA spending plan includes a significant investment in stormwater, and that is going to allow us not to raise the stormwater fee for this year. We're also continuing to work with Charles County and the Maryland Department of the Environment to manage our water resources and increase our available appropriations. Depending on our actual growth rate within the next decade, the town will exceed its water appropriation. And at that time, even with an agreement with ND in the county, we will have to purchase surface water. And surface water is just much more expensive than groundwater. We did incorporate this cost when doing our utility rate modeling. We strive to set water and sewer rates based on the actual cost to deliver services. Just due to historic inflation, aging infrastructure, and the proposed significant expansion of town staff, utility rates are projected to increase. They were actually projected to increase a lot more than what we're proposing, but we do have working capital on hand to offset some of those increases without jeopardizing our long-term financial solvency. This includes trash and sewer rates are proposed to increase 3%, recycling rates 5%, and water 7.5%. And as I stated earlier, there is no increase in the stormwater rate. And I also... Craig, if you could pull up the other attachment to the agenda, that shows the proposed utility increases broken out as a percentage and as a monetary value just from FY 22 to FY 23 of our water and sewer rates, our stormwater rate, and our refuse and recycling rates. With that, I open it up to any questions or discussion, and we can go over any part of the enterprise fund budget you would like.
Counsel, any questions?
I have a question, and I'm not quite sure it relates to the budget, but since you brought it up. If purchasing surface water is an option, why are we haggling with the county for water?
Well, the big reason is because we don't have access to surface water without going through the county. We could purchase from WSSC, for instance, or in doing that, we would have to purchase it through the county system and tie into our system. We have been working on this tie-in for many years. We have been negotiating with the county for in excess of 10 years for this planned interconnection. It does make sense. We all know that groundwater is both, I believe, a diminishing resource as well as a challenge resource. Now, water problems in this country are nationwide. The West is suffering tremendously. There was a special last night that we were watching on the Colorado River and the challenges they're having with that.
I just thought that we were trying to get groundwater through this conversation. So since we're not enough to purchase surface water anyway, I was just wondering why we didn't. So that was it.
The whole reason is really just ensuring that we can have a fair sharing arrangement with the county. And I don't think... If I could just be honest, I think that it's... The county is trying to use it as a means to control La Plata and not really the fact that they're trying to... Because I think the issues of how we buy water and all of those kind of things are fairly concrete. I mean, it's a black and white connotation, not something that's hard to determine. The real challenge becomes not having control. And that's...
In bigger picture, the more water we can get out of the ground, the cheaper it will be and the morbidly we are on WSSC. And also, the county and part of their capital improvement plan has their own surface water facility that they're looking at funding, which we could potentially partner on just to buy it at a reduced rate compared to what we will pay at WSSC.
Since we were purchasing, I just didn't understand if that was an option. Why wouldn't we do that instead of going through? So thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Any other questions right now? Go ahead. Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, Councilman Jenkins, Ward 4. I'm not sure how you want to handle this, but I have a number of questions, and I submitted them to Mr. Greenville and the Town Manager and you guys earlier today. So I don't... If you want, I can go through all of them, or we can just wait for that discussion.
Have you had an opportunity?
No, he hasn't, because we talked earlier.
Yeah, I've reviewed them. I am going to respond. So however you guys want to...
Yeah, it's really up to you guys how you want to do this. But just let me make, I guess, a comment first. So the question, one question. So the increase in staff is really primarily based upon your needs, but also that staffing organizational study. Is that correct?
That is correct. It showed that we were greatly understaffed and that we needed to come up. We're not trying to do that all at once.
Right. And I remember that was part of that process.
You know, we're in desperate need right now, as you and I spoke earlier. It's a big challenge just to try and keep up with day-to-day operations. But growth is clearly challenging for us, and we need to have staff necessary to grow.
And then just, I guess, just to underscore what Councilmember Bryant Ward and you talked about in terms of the ongoing efforts by the county and us to work together. I mean, I couldn't agree with you more. And I guess for me, it's just... It's at times a little disconcerting because at the end of the day, we're all in this together. And it's a resource. Groundwater is... It's like we have several straws, and we all have to draw from it. So it behooves everybody to hopefully work together to figure out... And I know they are. Some equitable solution, one way or the other. And I just have one final question that I did include, and then I'll shut up. And maybe we're going to talk about it in future sessions. Would any kind of a gray water system help reduce that load or the stress on either surface water or groundwater enough to make a difference, even though it is important that maybe reuse water?
It is clearly a priority of the state at this point to start reutilizing what you call gray water or reclaimed water from the wastewater treatment plant. The town of La Plata, 14 years ago, made a proposal to state that while we were laying the pipeline for the Willow Lane Pump Station to allow us to put a purple pipe, which is the pipe that would carry the effluent, back to the Willow Lane Pump Station. The state doctor, Chin, at the time, said, "We're not there yet." He said, "I'm sorry. You're a bit, a little bit ahead of the curve." So we didn't put one in. What we are doing right now, I'm working with Heritage Green to allow them to put the gas line... They're looking at a natural gas line coming down to feed Heritage Green as a heating source. And in exchange for that, I want them to lay a purple line all the way from Caroline Drive all the way up to Rosewood Road. So when they bring the gas line down, we will pay for the pipe, but they will lay it in there for us. So we would have a reclaimed line that would run all the way out to Rosewood Road. We also, when we built the 24-inch line down here at the Sonic, we built it around the corner there. And we are now in the process of getting the bid back to finish that line. We will also finish a purple pipe on top of that that will take effluent from the treatment plant up to the Maples. None of those will be active at this point, but we're kind of laying the groundwork to put things into ground so that we could utilize effluent at a later time. Councilmen, we're not in this country in a position where we're utilizing effluent the way it should be. The sad thing is, when you look at what it could be utilized for, there's no reason why firefighting water out of a hydrant can't be effluent. There's no reason why water for concrete can't be effluent. There's no reason why industrial uses like as a permit can't use effluent. There are numerous different ways. When people irrigate their lawns, there's no reason to have to use good potable drinking water like we utilize for those type of purposes. The challenge is our laws in this country in trying to protect health and welfare have always kind of negated a lot of the effluent uses because everyone's worried about, well, it might. And that's always a challenge. We do tend to side on the side of safety, and people aren't used to those uses. Your question was, will it get to a point to where it can make a difference? I think it will. I think it almost has to. But I don't think we're in this country yet in a position where we're starting to see that on a regular basis yet. And that, you know, run the big lines through the ground has the fire suppression systems using effluent. And to be honest, the lines for potable drinking water could be much, much smaller because the average house is only using 250 gallons a day. So my thought is, is that what you suggest is exactly that. It's very good. But we just haven't reached the point, and it usually takes the point of crisis in this country before we start adjusting some of the things that we do to do that. But we will get there. I think the town of La Plata is doing a good job with it at this point and laying some of the pipe work and things in place for the future.
You know, and I would applaud public works and the staff for being that proactive and being forecasting that. So I would certainly hope that we will keep up that effort, knowing we have obstacles in the future. Thank you.
And Councilman Jenkins, you did a great job with the questions that you posed for Mr. Greenville. And I love that. You know, I think that's what we're here for. We are to ask the questions that if we don't know the answer, I assume a majority of the public do not know the answer. So thank you for that. Mr. Greenville, would you like... Since you're just seeing this now, would you like to look at that and respond in the future? Or do you want to respond tonight? And I'm looking just on sanitation from page 114 on. What would you like to do?
Whatever counsel pleases. We can go through them tonight. I can respond this week to you. And we can, if there's anything, you know, we can discuss it at a later time. I leave it up to counsel.
It looks like they're pretty easy questions to answer. Bobby, you can't answer.
She said easy, not short.
No, but between...
Did you do something to my wife's car?
I tried to get her to go shopping. But if you would like to address that, and if it's bigger than what we have tonight, then we'll postpone that and have it in writing.
No, that... How would you guys like to proceed?
The capital improvement plan and the proposed rate changes, if it's possible to see how we get through those, and maybe we can come back to the questions.
We can do that as well.
And just one thing I think I forgot to mention is we do have $10,000 in each enterprise fund to conduct a rate study similar to the one we did with the major facility fee. We reached out to Mr. Nick Dragasic of Baker Tilly, who conducted the major facility fee review, to get a quote on that. He quoted us about $40,000. So we did include that. We think that would be very beneficial to, you know, have them go through our rate structure and recommend anything and sort of help us, you know, develop that formula and template that we can use year to year. We think it's a very worthwhile investment for the town. That will be coming to you for approval next year if it is appropriated within the budget. So I just wanted to...
Next year or next week?
Next fiscal year.
Next fiscal year. Excuse me. Yeah, we would... We are... I think our intention would be able to have that done before the end of this calendar year.
Okay.
That way, we could incorporate it into the next budget.
Good. All right. So I've heard that moving on to the capital improvement plan, we'll do that, and then we'll go to the proposed rate changes, and then we'll circle back if we have time, energy, to go back and answer the questions. Otherwise, we can have the questions answered through email.
So the capital improvement plan, I think the majority of these projects we went over and discussed in depth at the budget retreat. There is nothing in here that was added of any significance. I think I'd really just like to highlight that on page 143, Craig, if I have a, you know, just a funding sources summary broken down for each of the next five fiscal years. And I think just really this illustrates that, you know, the USDA funding of $12.65 million is the bulk of our monies that's coming in to fund our capital improvement plan. The rest is utilizing fund balance or working capital. There's a small state grant and minimal pay-as-you-go and vehicle reserve to fund these projects. And really, you know, the bulk of that is the USDA funding. We're doing $4.6 million in FY 23, $5.5 million in FY 24, and then another $2 million in FY 25. And the next page, Craig, page 144, and you can see we're heavily investing in construction, infrastructure. And the rest is capital equipment. And, you know, each project is listed for the next five years, just sort of going over the information, a description, impact on the future operating budgets, and a cost. I don't know if you guys would like me to go through each one, or if you have any questions on it.
I will entertain any questions that council has or comments. Councilman Jenkins?
Again, Councilman Jenkins from Ward four, just a general observation or comment. Again, a broken record, but I, I hope we can see fit to really build sidewalks. And that, even if we could kind of speed it up a little bit, can accelerate that because I, again, I hear a lot about that from residents.
I agree with that wholeheartedly.
And frankly, it, 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 all these, but this in particular is very, very consistent with the, with the comprehensive plan. It specifically talks about that. So, and one element that is really going to push us forward, obviously, is the radio station road sidewalk project that I know the town's been working on, and we got some state funds to do that. So I, I just hope we can continue that trend with other streets within the town.
Thank you. In, in looking at the capital improvement plan that we have, it is nice to see that a lot of the money is allocated for safety within our town, whether it's for the police department or for trucks to replace, you know, the equipment that our Public Works has. Much needed. And with this ARPA funding and with allocations from other sources, it's what needed, it's, we've needed this for a while. So I think that you've done a very nice job on that. And hopefully we'll get everything done in a timely manner, especially since we have the funding right now. Councilman Challenger?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Matt Challenger, Ward two. Thank you for putting this together, Mr. Greenville. As it relates to, I just wanted to, I know we're trying to hold some of our questions to the end, but as it related to Councilman Jenkins' question about the sidewalk or just a comment about the sidewalk, we have here listed 75,000 earmarked towards, it says replace and upgrade sidewalks as needed throughout the town. As I read that, is that exclusive of placing new sidewalks throughout? Or is that just the way we've described it here? Or would that also
Actually for replacement of existing sidewalks.
Okay.
And to be honest, we, you know, and I, and I have to stress that with all of the new communities that are being built right now, they're very, very sidewalk heavy. And so all of the streets and roads that I'm aware of on new developments are all very sidewalk intensive. So 75,000 is to come in and upgrade and replace a lot of the existing sidewalks where we have three-foot wide sidewalks, where we have a lot of unevenness. I know Councilman Brian Ward had brought some of the sidewalks to my attention. And we spent a lot of time and effort recently down at Steeplechase to do a lot of sidewalk work. And we've just now completed that. And we have a lot more to do, even over in Kings Grant. There's going to be a lot of sidewalk work around the stormwater, which is getting ready to happen. So we're going to be spending a lot on the new sidewalks.
Will that be a similar process as the paving process in that we've got a tiered priority list of sidewalks and release dates, so to speak, where you've got a period of time that is most efficient for our crews to, to do this work? And we've got them essentially graded as worst condition to, to not as, as, as an emergent.
We need to go through town and re-mark all of the sidewalks or at least write the list down. Projects. I just had Austin Dirt Works Concrete Crew just finished a bunch of sidewalks down at Steeplechase. And now they're moving on to other projects throughout the town that we have on the list. And then we will be getting major stormwater work over in Kings Grant. And so we'll get a lot of sidewalk replacement associated with that. So there is going to be a tremendous amount of sidewalk work coming up. But as I said, mainly replacement and upgrades of what we have as existing.
Councilman Challenger, typically new sidewalk is more likely to be eligible for grant funding under different federal grant programs, such as, I'm not sure what it's called now, Transportation Efficiency Act. I've talked to Director Harrington about potentially doing a sidewalk inventory areas where we don't have sidewalk and add some of those pieces together and create a network and prioritize sort of a plan, if you will, that we could then go out and seek funding at the federal level, similar to the funds that we're looking at for Washington Avenue. It's a federal program. It's 80/20, 80% federal, 20% local. If we partner, and there are instances in Maryland where I think even state highway will pick up the local match. So that's a program we're looking to utilize in the future for areas where we do not have existing sidewalks.
And we, we would be able to get, I guess, is that list published as far as the sidewalk priority list like we did?
Publish it, and I'd be happy.
Sarah, wait.
Provided to council so that they can
Yeah, it, this is kind of comes with updating the website allows more residents to be able to, to be more informed and to let us know. Because look, I mean, some of our neighborhoods, they don't even know whether or not the town can help with the sidewalk or not, whether it's an HOA issue or a town issue, and it depends probably on a number of factors that they don't even have access to what the rules are.
Most of the sidewalks in town are generally within our right of way. So they are town. And I'm trying to think of a case where I, they're not. And I'm not aware of one off the top of my head that I could name where they're not within the town right of way. So most of them are owned by the town.
Shared use paths sometimes where work is great.
Each block, each five-by-five-foot block of sidewalk costs approximately $250 to replace. So when you look at it for, you're replacing four blocks of sidewalk for $1,000. Four times 75, you know, is 300 blocks of sidewalk is that entire. And that's not a lot when you're in here trying to do. And some of the things that, like, off the top of my head, the we are going to upgrade the entire sidewalk on North Oak, for instance, over to the hospital. And Councilwoman, you're certainly aware of the issues over there. We have both stormwater issues and sidewalk issues. And just like over at Kings Grant, when we go in and have to do work on the stormwater, we then have to upgrade the sidewalk. And I would say that we're probably just on North Oak alone could use, my assumption is a fourth of the $75,000 could just be for that sidewalk replacement right there. So it's a challenge.
Okay. The other, just a bird's eye view of how the funds are being spent. And I appreciate the graph or the pie chart allocating that the majority of our funds in this section are for construction purposes and for infrastructure. As we look at it, the majority of those funds are being spent towards our, our water treatment facilities. Is that, that's fair? I mean,
Yes, correct.
The, the, like, probably, and I didn't do the numbers, but probably at least 80% of that amount
Correct.
of the construction. So fair to say, I mean, the town is significantly upgrading our, our water treatment facilities and looking towards all of the growth moving forward to the extent that the majority of all of these funds are going, not the majority of all of the funds, but the majority of the funds are going towards increased capacity for our wastewater treatment.
That is correct.
Okay. Like
And if I could point out, Councilman, in that, you know, I, I would suggest to you that also 80% of your capital infrastructure in town or better is associated with sewer and water. So you have to also understand your spending is that much, but also, you know, you've got a $50 million treatment plant sitting there. You know, you've got 24 pump stations, you've got 40 miles of sewer pipe, you've got 40 miles of water pipe, you've got 20-some miles of stormwater pipe. And so when you look at the capital assets of the town and you think about, you know, the police station, several million dollar facility, Town Hall is a several million dollar facility. And you look at the overall capital infrastructure that you've had laid out, it's important to understand that roughly 80 to 90% of your capital infrastructure in the town is associated with your, your sewer and water and stormwater. So it's, it's, it's not something where we're suddenly spending a huge percentage to catch up, although we're doing some of that. It is also that that's where the investment is today.
I, I do have a question for you, Mr. Greenville. On page 145, we have the FY '21 Capital Improvement Plan Tracking Report. And it looks like, I mean, I love, first of all, I love the pink. Do more pink. And it shows under budget, which is awesome. And it shows that four projects are pending. And if I read this correctly, this is, this was completed, it was reported as of last year of 20, June of 2021. Has there been any update to 1, 5, 8, and 9? And especially, I'm curious about number five, why it's 0% complete while number five, nine, I get. We're working on that, and that's the Southwest quadrant, and that will move forward, especially in light of what I received in the mail today. So that will go. But, you know, number five, it looks like money has not been spent on that.
So Mayor James, you are correct for nine and eight. Those are moving forward. They're going to be part of the USDA loan. It's the Southwest quadrant and the upgrades for the wastewater treatment plant. In FY '21, we just budgeted the engineering portion of that. So we did do some of that. And we are going to move forward now with the actual construction of that this year and over the next several years. Number one was the space needs assessment, architecture study for the PV building. We discussed that recently. We're going to get something out for procurement purposes for that and get the ball rolling. I think with a, Bobby, correct me if I'm wrong here, we're going to do an architectural design, and we're also going to do a, a sort of a program plan as well for that. Number five is the Dorchester Community Center. We are in the process of designing that, if, if I'm correct, Mr. Manuel. And we're, we're still moving forward with that, but construction has not started.
So I know someone must be paying the neighborhood design team. Where is that money coming from? It's not part of the CIP.
We did not pay them until FY '22. So the current fiscal year is when we started that. So that is why nothing is in there. That is being allocated to that project and will be capitalized with the cost of it. The first cost didn't come until this fiscal year.
And I don't see, and I looked through, but I might have missed it. You did not include an FY '22 tracking report in this. Did you not?
No, I did not. I, I include those with my treasurer's reports. So I can, I can send you whatever month you would like and the most up-to-date one.
I love how you did this tracking report. It's very easy to see, I love the colors, but it's very easy to see what has been going on. If you could, and, and maybe it's not until next year that, at the same time that we get to see FY '22 with the track report. But if there's something that you could put together like that for us, even though it's in your reports, this is very, you know, snapshot of, of what's going on. Easy, we don't have to go digging for it.
Sure, yeah, I could include the previous year ending June 30th, and then also probably the December ending one and January ending one for the current fiscal year. And if I could just mention, this was a recommendation by Mr. Manuel to create this and start including it in the
Oh, I love it. Because we could see up to FY '22, the third quarter, because that just finished. So we could see the progress that way. So that would, to me, would be very helpful.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilman Jenkins?
I, I just an observation that I, I would underscore what Councilman Challenger said about, you know, the, a plan for sidewalks. And, and I just add one more caveat to that. And, and this is not to pit communities against communities, but hopefully, you know, we're, we're also looking at older, older communities in, in the town that perhaps need sidewalk improvements more than other ones in terms of their age.
That's why I think when Mr. Manuel said that Director Harrington is going to do kind of a town-wide assessment and see, pinpoint what's going on, I think that is awesome.
Because there's some older residential communities that are older, and so they, they've had a lot of wear and tear. Unfortunately, they've had trees that have this kind of a disconnect, literally a disconnect. So what hopefully, and again, it's, it's just trying to, you know, make, make the money we spend as most of, as, as effective as we can make it. But we're certainly being aware of where we spend it as well. So, thank you.
Any other questions on the CIP? All right. Fantastic, exciting times. I love to see things progressing. All right, the proposed rate changes.
Craig, if you could pull up the attachment that was included with the budget. Thank you. And Mayor Council, these are the proposed rate changes. We, the water usage is proposed to go up 7.5%. It's rounded up on this to eight. Sewage, 3%, stormwater, zero. Our refuse collection rates are proposed to increase 3% and recycling is 5%. Once again, we are offsetting some of the increase by using our working capital without, you know, jeopardizing any of our long-term financial solvency. Last year, we did that in recycling because we did see such a large increase. Fortunately, we have the working capital within our sanitation fund to offset that. And like I said, we, we do have that money in the budget to, you know, have a utility rate assessment done to just review our rates, get that outside opinion and help us come up with a just something we can use year to year moving forward. And we really, you know, we, we reached back out to Baker Tilly just because we feel like they did such a good job on our major facility fee. You know, they, they weren't nickel and diming us, they were really trying to help us and, you know, and improve our calculation.
And I, and I will say that, you know, for instance, the recycling contract is going up 15%.
Wow.
We're absorbing a significant increase in recycling in, in this year's budget, where we only go up 5%. And you can understand with the cost of fuel almost doubled from where it was last year, the cost of labor is increasing dramatically. The cost of disposing of the recyclables has gone up dramatically. So all of the costs are going up, you know, just like inflation. And so it is a challenge for us in that. When you see a 5% rate increase, doing the, the inflations at eight and a half, you know, it's, it's a challenge.
Right.
Put that under, I mean, our, our sanitation fund is proposed at $1.9 million for this fiscal year. And recycling, why do I not see? And recycling is only $200,000 of that. So we are able, you know, it's not like recycling is 50% of our whole operating budget. It's about 10%. So I just wanted to point that out.
Good. Councilman Goldsmith, since you have been sitting there so quietly, I've almost forgotten that you were there. Do you have any questions or any comments?
Not on the enterprise funds at this point in time. I have sent an email to Brent on the, I guess, administrative side. And Kevin said he's having an answer point soon. And it's not, I think we need to bring it up at this kind of meeting.
Okay. Good. Well, thank you. I just didn't want to forget you were there, so I appreciate you being there. I just have one kind of observation, and then Councilman Jenkins, the, the percentage, is that mostly based on COLA, the cost of living, the, the 3% going up? That's our normal rate?
Well, I guess it's more, it's several things. And if you're talking about one in particular, you know, it's really a reflection of, you know, the, the inflation we're seeing. I mean, everything's going up across the board. We've put several new positions within each fund. And it's, you know, our, our aging infrastructure as well. I mean, some of those, we do use operating funds and working capital to repair and replace them. You know, if they're not in a significant way that we can, you know, capitalize on them. So that, that really is the big driving forces behind that. I mean, I mean, 8.9% inflation was the last number at the end of March. So I think you're going to see, you know, we've seen electric rates rise significantly, and I think you're going to see utility rates continue to rise. So we're doing our best to, you know, not, you know, sticker shock our residents. And we know, you know, everybody's facing this inflation across the board. So that is, that's the main driving force in those increases.
Thank you. Councilman Jenkins, did you have something?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Jenkins, Ward 4. These proposed rate increases, and I would just refer back to a previous comment that Councilman Tralander made about posting this kind of information on the website and having a more robust website so we engage the citizen, tell them what's going on. Is there, not to add to work, but is there, it's part of the budget? Or even part of this proposed or suggested rate increases? Is there a way to have a brief summary of why they're going up? Because people are going to say 8%, and they're probably going to fall off their chair when they see that. Because I've had, I've seen comments already, folks have already raised the issue about, you know, why is our water going up so much? I'm not saying that it's not needed. I'm just saying that perhaps we can provide a brief bullet or something that says why. Again, that may not satisfy everybody, but at least we have some, some way of telling folks what's going on. That's all.
Yeah, Councilman Jenkins, we will, we'll take that under consideration and see what we can do to get that out there. I think it's within the budget, you know, but I understand putting it into a more simpler, easier-to-read format for people and put it out there, so.
Okay. So Madam, you said that 10,000 was allocated across four entities for studies. And if Baker Tilly is charging us 40,000, where's the other 30 coming from?
Each one of the four enterprise funds. It would be 10,000 in water, 10,000.
Yeah, 20, 25% each.
Stormwater, 10,000 from sanitation.
Okay, good. Paying attention. Wonderful, great question. Any other questions? Go ahead, Councilman Tralander.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Matt Tralander, Ward 2. I think we're just like playing ping pong over here. But I think anytime there is a fee change, and of course, we don't usually see them go down, right? I think it is a good idea whenever we increase rates that we have a clear, concise explanation as to why. And I don't know that it's just enough to say that inflation is the reason because everybody, unfortunately, everybody is dealing with it, like we stated. But I was curious as to how the town can soften that blow, right? So this is a rate that we're suggesting for the upcoming year. Perhaps the Baker Tilly, Baker Tilly?
Yes.
Yeah. Baker Tilly study comes back and says, hey, you know, your rates are too high. Okay, great. Then we can give relief to our residents at that time. But if it comes back and says, no, it's just right, I mean, how long does the town, you know, reduce that overall cost? How long can we keep that going for our residents in that sense?
I think fortunately for us, we take a sort of a long-term view when doing our rate setting. You know, we try to do moderate increases when necessary. So we don't have, you know, one year where we have to, we haven't raised it in two years, and then we have to come in and say, oh, yeah, you know, we need to raise it 15%. You know, fortunately, within our sanitation fund, we have a good working capital amount. So, you know, I think, I don't have like an exact answer to that. But we always take a long-term view. You know, I think with next year, you know, when getting the Baker Tilly study done, and we'll look at it then, you know, I, there's no concern of like, oh, next year, you know, we're going to have to do a 20% increase or anything like that. I mean, we're going to be able to continue to sustain these just based off us projecting out longer costs. I can't tell you, you know, we can do it for five years, we can do it for three years, but we're really not, you know, risking by buying this down like a huge increase in the near-term future because we are doing it in a planned and sort of a responsible way.
Yeah, I think what you said is helpful to understand is that we don't floor somebody with a huge, oh, we can't get to hear this anymore. You've got to have a full bill. One thing that Bobby mentioned was helpful to know is that he stated, look, we've got 15% increased costs for recycling, but a resident may see just a 5% increase in their fee rate. Are we seeing, you know, the same as the trash and sewer? Or, I mean, what are we looking at as far as the actual cost increase to us versus what we're passing, what we're asking for help with from the resident on these other two increases?
So I think with sanitation, we are increasing at 3%. I think we're sort of offsetting, I want to say about a 3% there. Within sewer, I think it's right around 3% to 4%. And with water, I think, what, it was about a 10% increase, and we're doing about 2.5%. And with recycling, you know, it probably was over 15% right around there. But fortunately, with, you know, recycling, it is a, you know, 10% of our overall sanitation fund. And I'm just ballparking those numbers, but they're roughly approximately right.
Councilman, if I could.
Yeah.
With sanitation, you really have three costs. You have fuel, you have labor, and you have disposal fees. And that's where you really have to look at that and say, you know, realistically, fuel has been a 50% inflationary increase in that situation. Labor is going up. Landfill fees actually went up fairly reasonably. They went up $4 this year. So we're seeing only a $4 increase on an $81 rate. It'll now be 85. So we're looking at roughly a 5% or 6% increase. In the treatment plant, when it comes to sewer, you really have four costs. You have electricity, chemicals, labor, and you have repairs and maintenance, all of which are going up. And that's, so all of these are very difficult in these times. With water, it's even fewer. You have electricity, you have labor, and you have chemicals. And so all of those things are, you know, rapidly rising. And I'll give you the example. Electricity for us went up 27% last year.
Wow.
We have, in this year, in speaking to SMECO, they're saying that we should budget somewhere between 15% and 25%. And the bulk of that is actually coming from generation, not from distribution. Their distribution costs, they're saying, are going to stay around 10%. But that the overall, when you include in the generation versus the distribution, you know, we should be looking at 15% to 25%. And our budget actually reflects 25. So we were very cautious with that, and we put those, you know. In the recycling fee, for instance, the recycling company is taking right now a $7 per household fuel surcharge, excuse me, a 7% fuel charge, fuel surcharge, and an 8% increase in the recycling rate. So they're, they've actually put in a temporary 7%. So some of that 15% could come back if fuel prices come down. But I don't see that in the near future.
Yeah, so that was going to be my follow-up question is, of course, if we've got trash going up 5%, why in the world would recycling? Because they have similar costs or similar factors in determining those costs, right? You've got fuel, labor, and disposal. Why would recycling outpace so much the trash increase? I mean, to be 10% higher?
We do trash in-house.
Right.
And we're absorbing some of that cost in-house, whereas the recycling, we're outsourcing that to a contractor. And you're kind of at the mercy of the contractor in that situation.
And this is the same company that told us we couldn't recycle our cardboard during COVID because of prices in China or something? It's just.
Yeah.
There are multiple reasons for that. I'm happy to discuss.
Okay, the last question I have is to the consumer and to the particular resident. And so I'm, make sure I'm reading this correctly, Mr. Rainville. So we've got the fees, the FY22 fees, and FY23 fees, like kind of side by side with the difference in cost. That's to a certain amount of gallons used. And this, maybe this is a joint question between you and Bobby because he knows the amount of typical use for a resident. We've got 30 cent difference as we have it as a rate increase for 0 to 15,000 gallons. I mean, what does it look like to the resident with a normal water increase in their, in their spend? You know, as far as our, our rate increase to them?
You know, Councilman Tralander, if I had a little bit more time, I was going to also do just like a typical bill. You know, take the average of everything and show it from last year to this year. And that's something I can provide and send it to you, and we can make public. I just, I didn't have time to do that, and it wasn't something I wanted to do. So I can definitely provide you guys with that information, and it won't take a terrible amount of time.
Household uses about 15,000 gallons, and a 30 cent increase would give you about $4.50. So, and that's on a quarterly basis.
Okay.
And I think that's important to see. We're numbers people as far as how the percentage is confusing. I mean, it's obviously, you guys know what that is, but what does that mean to my pocketbook?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll take an average bill from last year and, or I guess this year, and do it for the.
That would be so helpful.
And can show you the difference on each line item by line item.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I throw you a curveball, but I think that's helpful. Thanks for doing that for us.
I do. I think we have to put it in very simple terms for everyone because they don't live this day to day, you know, we do. And so for a snapshot picture, just like I said, for the CIP for 2022, let me, give me the least amount of information that's going to satisfy what I need. So thank you, I appreciate that. I don't have any more questions on the proposed rate changes. Council, any other ones? I think it's pretty straightforward. I would like to go back to the questions. I think that I would like the answers probably written out if that would, for, so we can reference that instead of going back and forth and making us all dizzy going to page 12 to 112. And that way, we can absorb that as far as really concentrating on that. If council is okay with that? Good, okay. And same with what Councilman Goldsmith had given, too, if we could have those answered so we can look at those. Any other questions on these two, the CIP or the proposed rate changes? I think you guys did a good job on that, so thank you for that. All right, that was easy.
Yeah, well, first work session in May. We intend to present the class and comp study, go over the, oh, the schedule of fees. Any other outstanding budget items we can discuss at the following work session as well. So we do have still two more budget work sessions planned for, if you have anything.
So that would give us time to have that discussion of all the questions and responses, right?
Right, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Good, and I encourage.
I think that's important to have this kind of discussion among all of us.
Absolutely. I do, too. And I encourage all of us to look at it again and, and ask questions. Because if we have the questions, I'm sure public has the questions as well.
And it's very typical for a proposed budget to always change. So we, even in the adopted budget, we have a section in there showing line item by line item, what changed from the proposed to the adopted. So it's very common for that.
Great, thank you very much, I appreciate that. All right, we'll move on to matters of information. I love this little PowerPoint on what is an annexation because so many people don't understand what an annexation is. So, Mr. Manuel, is this yours to take? Because I don't see Janine on there.
I believe I will take it. Yeah, there's been much discussion, as you stated, on annexation and what the process is and what it isn't. Janine Harrington, planning director, took it upon herself to sort of put this together. I thought it would be important to get it up on the website. That way, if council does get questions, you guys can direct them to the specific agenda. And we will probably also try to get it posted on just the front page of the website, wherever the front page ends, because I think it scrolls continuously. So that's a work in progress. But, you know, we just wanted to have this in your agenda packet to see if you had any input prior to us sort of making those links live on our webpage.
Council, any questions?
I have some, I guess, questions and some comments. Again, this is a great effort. Not only is it visually good, but it has some text with it. So I guess what you referred to earlier, Mayor, is that a lot of us were visual in this 10. Not to simplify, but visual really, really helps. And again, I think this is important, and particularly as it talks about the comp plan and how they're related. I just have a little bit of a concern that I know the state requires in our comp plan that we have to have a municipal growth element within the comp plan. That's a Maryland State Department requirement. But I hope, and my concern, frankly, is that just because an adjacent area may have been identified in 2020 land use plan as being a growth area, that doesn't suggest that automatically or somehow it's, has a fast track to be indexed. I just want to avoid that, that sense that because it's a, it's a growth there, it doesn't necessarily mean that the town's going to index it.
Absolutely. I think that is very important because people do get a little nervous about that. Some people have chosen to live in the county, even though it butts right up to our town.
Is this, is this trying as best we can to try to educate folks of what the process is? And that's all, because I had somebody ask me, does the town actually solicit folks to be annexed into the town? And I, frankly, did a double tag, and I said, no, it's, there are certain requirements, there's rules, there's procedures, and the property owner can make application, there are certain requirements they have to meet. So this is a great effort to do that, so thank you. And then on the third page, it talks about, again, the, you know, about what the planning commission's role is. And I know Councilman Bryant Ward has spent a lot of time on this as well. So can the planning commission ask questions other than just about the zoning and/or consistency with the comp plan? I mean, can they talk about or ask questions about water or sewer or traffic or those kinds of questions? I'm just curious.
Yeah, I think that, first of all, I don't know. That would be my one answer. The planning commission, you know, when the items that you identified are probably elements of the comprehensive plan. So when you're looking at compliance with the comprehensive plan, those are probably items that should be taken into consideration. Would be more comfortable with Ms. Harrington answering that question, but she's not here tonight. But I believe, you know, under comprehensive planning, there are many elements that a commission should take under consideration before whether they find compliance or not. And some of the elements you have listed would be ideally taken into consideration.
And then on page four of the actual document, there's a great visual about how the chain, town banner have changed over the years, and I think that's great. Perhaps some additional colors are just, I'm just nitpicking now, that's all, just to make it easier to read.
Was it missing a period?
No, not that. And then, again, on page five, again, it's a great overview of the comp plan, and I think that's important that we, you know, we always refer to that, and that's part of the process. And I don't know whether this is the appropriate document or some future point to have maybe a, a separate summary about what's in the comp plan and what are the goals and objectives. And I do remember when it was adopted by the prior council, there was a really good kind of a summary PowerPoint slides that perhaps we could use. that perhaps we could use as, and either update them and/or condense them and to provide just another visual about what the comp plan is, that's all.
I do think that more information that is available to our residents, uh, the more, uh, the opportunity for them to understand, as well as us, the process and, um, and it's all working together. So I love how Director Harrington took this upon herself to, to educate, uh, as an educational, uh, resource for our residents.
And, and then one final question. When does the, um, so Dave Jenkins applies for an annexation. He fills out the application, it's reviewed by legislative affairs and the planning staff, right? And then it's, I guess it meets it and it moves forward. So at, at, at what point is the application package go to the county for review and the state planning for review? Because I'm, it's, it's confusing to me right now because it, I, I thought one annexation we were, we're looking at or one of the three is already been sent for review, but yet this document says it's after. I'm not sure they jive or, or maybe I'm wrong, I'm just not sure.
Under the petition process for the applicant-initiated one, I think that it pretty much outlines sort of the process. Now, that is always a fluid, uh, situation. Any snag can come in. Perhaps the applicant does not send in a master site development plan and it derails it for, uh, a, a long enough time. But, um, Director Harrington, when I have heard her speak on this, she has been, um, you know, you could do parallel tracks and it could be as short as 15 months for certain things. Other ones, it's 18 months, 24 months. But, um, I think it really is dependent. And also when we're working for, with another entity, when we're working with the county or we're working with the health officials, that is always, uh, process that, um, you know, we can't count on how long it will be. But they kind of give you a little bit of an overview on the annexation petition process. But I think she is wise not to put anything in writing as to how long it would take because, uh, there are too many, uh, other factors that go into this. But that would be something that the petitioner would probably sit down with Director Harrington to find out once they, uh, do, uh, petition to be, be annexed in.
I wanted to address the comp plan, the comp plan, because when we did the last comp plan, there was a lot of public input. We had work sessions where we came here and we sat at different tables together and pulled information, shared information, and made recommendations towards the comp plan. So the, the public does have an opportunity to come in and be a part of the process. But, you know, I remember sitting in the back of that room and there may have been about 25 people here, you know, out of our entire town. And that was an invitation that was extended to all. That was when Jeremy was planning director and, um, and it was a process. We, I mean, it was just a really thorough, um, totally engaged. Nobody was feeding you information. You had opportunity to sit at this table, talk about what was important, what needs to happen. And so it's not like it's not, the public is not included. They are definitely included is how many will participate.
And in addition to the annexation, um, information that will be up on the website, we also have, which, uh, we, I did not upload this in a future work session, a fact sheet, fact or myth on water appropriation, which I will send to you all via email if you haven't seen it. So you can put your input on there. But again, it's a very simple, here's, here is a myth, here is the fact. Because the myth is out there and people need to know what the, the fact is. So that should be coming to you. I'll get it out to you this week. And I would really appreciate any input on that because it's just a rough draft right now. But I think it's important to have it available for the public when they're asking these questions and for us as well. And Bobby put some input on that as well.
And, and I couldn't agree with you more. And I think it just, again, underscores, and all your observations and comments by Councilman Tronzer about the website and getting information out. And, and again, and the discussion we had about water supply is very, very important. And that relates directly to the rate structure as well. So it's all interconnected. So, you know, any factual data or factual information that we can put out, I guess you'd call it a fact sheet.
Right.
That's great.
It's not pointing fingers.
No, no.
It is absolutely facts. No emotion.
But, but, but that's the point. You're right. It should just, you know, as, as they would say, I'm gonna date myself, just the facts.
Right, just, yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Great. Any other, uh, comments on, um, the annexation?
Just a question. So, Mr. Manuel, if we have questions about any particular items on the slide or arrangement, just direct them to Director Harrington at work.
She's not here, yes.
She's gone.
Oh, you are bold. You are bold.
Thank you.
Great. That brings us to, um, future work sessions.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, um, as you see, personnel handbook, town charter amendment, the purple pipe, which we discussed earlier, the bottom three get very, uh, Director Stahl-oriented. Purple pipe, uh, the MS4 program update, as well as the Tillman Lake Dam engineering. So, uh, Director Stahl will be prepared. Of course, we're attempting to thin a little bit of the information because of the budget and we know how timely that, uh, process can be. But I think we're in a better place now and, uh, probably, uh, we'll start moving more of these items forward as part of your work session agenda.
I have a question for you. Um, the orientation.
Yes, I went back and checked my email and my contacts said that, uh, as far as, as part of the registration, uh, I provided them with, uh, each council member's email. And, uh, the contact said that they would be directly emailing links as the time approaches. Yeah.
I want to say it's this week or next week. I think I had it in my calendar.
So I will circle back to ICMA to ensure that we weren't forgotten.
And, um, I, I don't know.
I know I sent the email, council on.
I don't know who was able to attend the verbal judo that the, um, chief had, uh, over at, that's, um, thank you, Wills Park, found it very informative. And, uh, I don't know if he left any other, um, pamphlets there. But if you all are interested, that is a very great tool to have when speaking with the public. And, um, and judo is not, you know, the karate. It's, it's, although that's what you're thinking, it's how to say it very nicely. So I love that. I thought he did a fantastic job with that. And not only did he gear it towards our police officers who have arguably the most, um, interaction with people in a hostile manner a lot of times, how you can diffuse a situation, but also with our front staff when people are maybe upset about water bills or whatnot. So I, I applaud, uh, the, the chief for bringing that in to us and anyone who attended. I think that it was beneficial and if you want to learn more about it, Mr. Manuel or, uh, the chief, uh, I'm sure could have more information on it. That brings us to the public forum. If anyone would like to speak this evening, just state your name, your address, and whether you're in the incorporated town limits, and limit it to three minutes, please.
May, this is, this is Patty Mudd. Wow, hello there.
Bernie Bushport, hello, hello. Um, a couple of, uh, additions to, um, the discussion about the Historic Preservation Commission. I was part of, Danielle and I actually wrote that legislation way back in 2017, redoing the commission, and we really got into the woods with it. And so the new, that, that new, uh, piece of legislation that Jim, um, introduced tonight was just simplifying it, making it, um, exactly like Plan, the Planning Commission, Beautification, and Parks and Rec, all have five members and one alternate. And the, a council member, the council member is one of the five, one of the five voting members. And there's no, uh, there's nothing in it, in, in any of them saying that you can only have two members living outside of the town limits. That's, so what we did is we took all of that out. We made it, we, we just made it really simple. Five members and an alternate. The council member is one of the voting members. So a quorum of three. And, um, we cut, we cut out all of that other stuff you all were asking about, about the, the staggered terms and all of that. It's just, it's just not needed. And we, you know, we've, we've been going, we, we're doing really well, we're going really strong. It's just, it just got into the, it, we, we really were in too much into the woods with it, the way it was. And I have one, one more issue.
Go ahead.
And if you have any questions, yeah, I can answer them. We have one more issue, the trash, we talked about it one time several years ago. Is it possible to talk to Van Gogh to put some trash cans at some of those major stops? There is trash all over and now that we have the, now that we have the park, well, there, there is one, there's one shopping cart out in front of, out on Drury Drive now that some people have put trash in, which is a good idea, right at the Van Gogh stop. But isn't there some way, there's something about that, um, I think people might use them if we had trash cans at some of these major Van Gogh stops.
That's a great idea. Mr. Manuel's on that. Thank you, Patty. I appreciate that. I appreciate you being on the Historic Preservation, uh, Commission and all the hard work that you do. Um, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. And I think all of you, you're doing a great job. And I love the PowerPoint. That's great.
Good. You know, we always have room for you.
Thanks, thanks, guys. Bye-bye.
Thanks, Patty. Any other speakers this evening? Before we adjourn, I want to thank you, Joanne, and I know you hate this, but I gotta thank you for being there yesterday for the Easter Bunny and the ice cream. You're a big help to Colleen. I know. And, and you know what? And you still keep coming back, so thank you so much for that. You know, it's volunteers like you that we really appreciate. I did not know that. Good, I will. So I think that we should start a fund so she doesn't go away to college so she can come back here next year. But thank you. I appreciate that. And with that, um, I move to adjourn our meeting. All in favor? Please indicate by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Good meeting.